Mohave County Board of Supervisors, if you'll please rise. I have asked Supervisor Gould to do this morning's invocation. And Supervisor Johnson, will you leave us in the pledge?
Please join me in prayer. Lord, we thank you for this great nation you've given us, Lord, and we thank you for this responsibility you've placed on our shoulders to make decisions for Mohave County, Lord. Help us to make wise decisions, Lord, as we go through our meeting here today. Watch over our county employees and keep them safe. Many of them have dangerous jobs that put them in harms way, Lord. We ask that you bring them home safely to loving arms of their families this evening. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and the motion to call for an executive session to be held on May 20th at 9:00 a.m. for discussion and consultation with legal counsel in accordance with ARS 38-431.03. So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion and action to approve waiving the reading in full of items presented for discussion, adoption, or approval at this meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Oh, okay, so we have Supervisor Watson is on the phone this morning.
Thank you.
Okay, official business to come before the board. Mr. Espilin, discussion of pending or contemplated litigation claims and demands?
Nothing to report to the board, thank you.
Okay. Are there any committee and or legislative reports? Supervisor Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The California RIT Recovery Implementation Team had a meeting. It was good in that there was quite a report from several agencies who were trying to work to do work other than just survey and study, sadly though a lot of the meeting was dominated by bureaucracy. Now, the Marines are really getting into the egg oiling for raven population control. Fish and Wildlife Service has yet to reach a decision on listing of the Joshua Tree, still pending in the regional office. One concern expressed was from Caltrans, whose representative said it was running out of land to acquire for mitigation. Recently, they had to find almost 3,000 acres. Mitigation land is turned over to an NGO or non-government agency, not the BLM. The real shock came from the fact that the California Department of Fish and Wildlife was requiring mitigation for lost habitat for the strip between the highway shoulder and the tortoise-proof fence. It added 1,400 acres to mitigation requirement for Highway 395. I don't know if there's any other states doing this, but it's taking an awful, awful lot of land away from the public and costing the counties and the governments quite a bit of money. I submitted a report from the Lower Colorado River MSCP Steering Committee meeting. For everybody's information, that's handled by, through Quad State, we have a contract with them, so I have that there. And there's still no discussion on the Salton Sea, even though Bureau of Reclamation has placed a dedicated staff on the program. And I have a slide presentation, if anybody ever wants to see it, on exactly what the MSRP is, because it's hundreds of millions of dollars of our money that go into that. That's all, Madam Chair.
Supervisor Johnson, can you make that slideshow available somehow?
Sure.
To people, myself included? I'd like to see that. Thank you. Supervisor Bishop?
Thank you. I've been attending all the CSA meetings as our legislative liaison and duties involved with being chair of the Medium County Caucus.
Okay.
That's my report.
County Administrator? Oh, I didn't go to Supervisor Gould's. I'm always looking here. I missed over here.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I attended the Mohave-Lapaz County Workforce Development, and we had a great time. Thank you.
Okay. All right, now, do we have a county administrator's report?
Madam Chairman, no report today, thank you.
Oh, Gary, gosh. I am just out of it. Okay, I'm sorry, Supervisor Watson.
Madam Chairman, I have no report this morning. Thank you.
Okay. Now, County Administrator's?
No report today, Madam Chairman.
Okay. All right. Approval of the March 18th, 2019 Board of Supervisor Meeting Minutes.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion. Will we approve those minutes?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
All right, on to the call to public. Those wishing to address the board at the call to public regarding matters not on the board agenda must fill out and submit to the clerk a call to the public request to speak form located in the back of the room prior to the meeting pursuant to ARS 38-431.01. A public body may make an open call to public during a public meeting. We have one person signed up to speak, and that is Mr. Garnica.
Hello, my name is Arthur Garnica. I live at 3902 East Packer King in Arizona. And I got a reply from, I got a reply back from the AG. It's been about a year, but they said that you guys violated my freedom of speech and that you guys do have jurisdiction over NACFID. And I'm bringing you some paperwork documentation of, I caught our fire district guys out of district. They were over here on the city side. I caught them driving up and down the streets. They pulled over on Club Street in front of a title company, and they were conducting personal business in a fire truck. So I feel that it's a misuse of public monies. And the chief, Tim King, knew about it, and they're not doing nothing about it. They won't release no information who the people are, so I can make a complaint. So I'm asking you guys to make a complaint, and I'll just give you the paperwork and the picture showing the truck out there on the city side.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right, I have no one else signed up, but I'll open it up if anybody wants to speak at the call to public. Anyone? Okay, I'll now close the call to public. We have a presentation, an adoption of a proclamation proclaiming May 6 through May 11, 2019 Economic Development Week. Hi, Tammy.
Hi, and I don't know if it's a presentation or not, but I just thought maybe somebody else could read the proclamation.
Would you like that?
Because I have a pretty bad cold.
Oh, okay.
But until then, I just wanted to make a statement of what's going on and why many, most communities wonder what economic development is. And so four years ago, the Economic Development Corporation, IEDC, decided to proclaim the second week of May as Economic Development Week. And the idea during this week is to make awareness of what's happening within the communities. Well, I've only been here a short time, so this year we're not going to have a big celebration, but we thought would start, myself as well as the cities are going to start with a proclamation this year. And then I want to go out and meet with the local businesses and several of the businesses and thank them for being part of our community, because without our local businesses, we wouldn't be where we are today, and we wouldn't be the strength that we are. And so we appreciate the ones that are already here. To do economic development and for economic developers to be successful, there's so much involved. And one of the big things I think is important is being grateful for my supervisors, for each one of you, because without your support, I wouldn't be able to do my job. So I just wanted to preface that before you end up, somebody reading the proclamation. I apologize for this cold that I have.
Oh, that's fine. And for the record, this is Tammy Ursonback. She's our economic development, relatively new, but doing a bang-up job. Thank you. So you would like this to be read? Is that the case? Because we usually, you know, it's on the website.
If it doesn't have to be read, that's fine, too.
Okay.
But I think acknowledging in there, I did leave an S off of the two departments, economic development and workforce development together, work together as the county, obviously with the support of Public Works and the Development Services and all the different departments, but the two specifically making sure that we not only have jobs coming in, but we fill those jobs. We have the training that we're able to support the community. And so I left an S off, and I apologize.
No problem. This is a proclamation to acknowledge economic development, and it's processed as strengthened by the critical partnership between economic development professionals and local government leadership to promote a shared vision for developing vibrant communities. So we will have this on the website if anybody wants to read it. Thank you very much.
Chairman, Angus, we need a motion to vote on that to approve it.
Oh, okay. And the motion to accept this proclamation?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we accept the proclamation.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We have adopted it. All right, on to our consent agenda. The consent agenda items five through 31 will be considered as a group and acted upon by one motion minus any items pulled for discussion. Supervisor Johnson?
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three. Supervisor Bishop?
Five and six.
Five and six. Supervisor Gould?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Item 15.
Is that it?
That's it.
Oh, okay. I was waiting for the list. Okay, Supervisor Watson?
Get the DJ to turn that down.
Like the Twilight Zone. Is Supervisor Watson still on the phone?
I think that was him leaving.
That was him beaming up, I guess. No? Okay. If he, maybe he'll call back.
Madam Chair, if it's not, none of the ones I'd make a motion to approve consent minus five, six, 15, and 23.
Second. All in favor?
Madam Chair, if I may, item seven, the developers ask that that be pulled from this and be heard on the 20th.
Okay, so we're going to pull item seven? Seven?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so we need an amended motion because of that?
Correct.
Okay. Supervisor Johnson, can you amend that?
I'll make the...
Well, he's amended. He made it.
Okay.
Do we have something in front of us besides Mr. Walsh bringing this forward from the developer?
Chairman Angus, Supervisor Johnson, we received an email from the developer late last week, which was forwarded to the clerk of the board, but unfortunately, it was past the notification deadline to be able to amend the agenda.
All right, I'll amend mine to also include item number seven.
Okay.
And I'll second the amended motion.
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, item number five is an improvement, approving the appointment of Republican Precinct Committee men and women. And six is the resignation of such, and I believe I have someone signed up for that. Please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Tanya Jordan. My address is 2401 Wildflower Street here in Keene.
Okay.
Chairman Angus, Supervisors Watson, Gould, Bishop Johnson, and staff, thank you for giving me a chance to speak today. I'm a PC for the Mohave County Republican Central Committee representing Precinct 217. I've noticed some serious problems when reviewing the PC documents submitted by the chairman to this board. Number one, business address is being used instead of a physical address. ARS 16-822 defines the rules for the appointment and election of PCs, and it specifically says that to be appointed or elected, you must live in the precinct, because as a PC, you represent the voters and their interest in the party for that precinct. A business address does not establish residency. I sent our chairman a copy of the state election laws and requested he pulled the applications to verify the applicants actually live in the precinct. He's chosen to ignore the problem and allow the applications to go through to this board. Number two, missing precinct and contact information. The courts have long established that the voters are entitled to the contact information of their representatives. As a PC, you are a representative of the people.
District one is bending over backwards to deny voters access to the contact information
for their PCs. Number three, resignation forms not signed by the actual person resigning. We do not want a situation where a district director can just turn in a form removing an elected or appointed PC because he doesn't like them. A signature guarantees the person resigning is aware they are being removed and are the ones requesting that removal. Number four, the applications are not being verified by voter registration or the Elections Department. Last month, Jerry and Felicia Lynn were approved using the Subway Plaza in Golden Valley as their address. This month, the PC application submitted by Roger Gorham also lists a business address instead of residential. This shows that these are not being verified before they are submitted. So here's what I'm asking you to do. Pull all of the PC applications on today's agenda for Mohave County Republican Central Committee and do not approve them today. Meet with the Elections, Voter Registration, and County Attorney's Office to establish a procedure for verifying PC applications before approving them. Request the county attorney open an investigation into all of the PC applications submitted since October 2018. At the very least, some applicants have committed fraud on official forms submitted to the county. I would like to make sure it does not go further with the voters being defrauded of proper representation. Number four, establish a form that all parties and districts use for submitting PC applications to this board that includes proper contact information for those applicants to be submitted to elections and voter registration before they are approved. I understand the reluctance a couple of you may have in dealing with this issue, since you're not only county supervisors, but you sit on the executive board. But given our parties' failure to obey the law, you are the ones that now need to make sure state law is being followed. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a question for Mr. Espilin. Is this something that falls under us? Because I thought that was the party, that we, again, like some other things we do, we're just voting to accept them. Do we have a legal responsibility, like Ms. Jordan said?
Well, it's your responsibility to appoint them, and that's 16-822, I believe. It's where it falls upon the county supervisors if there's not enough to fill for an election. I mean, the whole process, you can go through the election process, but usually for PCs, there's not enough people to run to hold an election. So if that's the case, then the Board of Supervisors cancels the election and appoints the PC.
Okay. Supervisor Johnson?
Yes, I would say we have control, because they are an elected position, so they need to go through all the proper channels. And we've probably been pretty lax over the past few years of just accepting these. I don't know exactly what the board, what position the board wants to take, but, you know, all these people who apply, just like us, their home address and all their information is public records, so.
Madam Chairman, taking a look at the backup material, two of these resignation forms have no signature on it. I would deem them unacceptable, because as the testifier stated, you have no idea whether this person's actually resigning or not, or whether somebody just decided they would fill out a piece of paper and turn it in.
Yeah, I think it's probably time to instruct again what's the right way and what's the wrong way of doing these things.
I would agree. I don't think we can move forward with six today because of the lack of signatures. We've already approved five in the consent agenda, I believe.
No.
Okay, good.
We took that.
Let me take a look at those also, then. Thank you.
Okay. Supervisor Bishop, have anything to say?
I think we have been very lax on this in the past, and I agree with you, Chairman Angus. I think we need to tighten it up a little bit and take a look at these applications and make sure they're done right.
Okay, and this is for Republicans and Democrats, looking at all of it. So Supervisor Watson?
Yes, Chairman.
Is there anything you'd like to comment on this item?
No comment. I'm just glad that it's being tightened up. Thank you very much.
Okay, so what's the motion?
Can we just continue this for the next meeting?
If you continue, it'll just be the exact ones, the approved five and six. It'll be the exact same language that will come forward to the board. What we could do is, so we would look at those to determine whether these people should be approved or not, and we'd report back saying these specific persons. If you wished to go beyond that, if you want to go and say, well, tighten up the procedures or something else, then you would bring it back as a separate board action, and we would vote on it and say, okay, then let's go and change the procedures or change the forms or whatever it is.
Would we change the forms, or does the party change the forms?
I think it'd be, the part that we would probably change is, well, it relates to whether we canceled the election and appointed. I think we would work with the parties and say, hey, this is what we recommend that you use, so that we can verify these things, because ultimately, if you don't approve it, then it's not going to move forward. So I would recommend that you work with the parties to say, hey, why don't we use these new forms and stuff like that? I don't know how they were created originally. I mean, this has been going on for probably decades, right? So I don't know.
Which is probably why it's been so lax.
I'm just guessing. I don't know when the last time this was addressed. I don't, I don't know.
So Chairman Angus, Mr. Ryan, if we deny, that'll give the chairman an opportunity to resubmit the corrected applications.
Yeah, I mean, if you deny it, then there may come into a reconsideration. I'd recommend you just not, if you don't want to approve these today, just not take any action on it. Or you could continue it, and we could look into these specific ones, if you want to do that.
Okay, so we just won't take any action on five and six? Okay.
That's the case, if you don't want to.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Clerk of the board, your thoughts on that as well? No?
Everyone's okay with it? Okay.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
Do we want to instruct the clerk to actually check that these people are registered to vote at the address stated?
She doesn't do that. That's not the clerk's job.
Supervisor Gould, I would say that, I'm going to guess, would go through voter registration. I don't have access to those records in my office.
Because it seems like we should not be appointing people that don't really live at the address stated on the application. Otherwise, we're just a rubber stamp. And I'm not debating it with you. I'm just debating it with the other members of the board.
Well, that would have to be a kind of a policy change, then.
Well, three of us on this board have signed those forms before, so, but I know when I was chairman, we looked up to make sure everybody was a registered Republican, because people have been submitted who weren't even Republicans to become, and that's, I want to mention Republicans, because that's who I dealt with. But yeah, I would think we could just continue this and send it back to staff for...
That's why I agree. Continue this, so that in the interim, we can direct staff to verify the person's address and so forth, and then come back with a report saying these persons are at that location or not. We would have to work with the voter registration, with the Recorder's Office to determine that.
Okay, according to Ms. Jordan, there are some issues, too, with just some of the wording on the application. Could we sort of send, either from your office or from the board, an official letter to the chairmen's of the parties and, you know, instruct them what should be on these applications? Because apparently, no one looks at them anymore.
I mean, you could direct us to do that. You could direct staff, ask the county attorney's office to do that, and we could look into it, if that's what you wish us to do.
Right. So it's just legally what has to be on it for us to then approve it?
Yeah, and the county attorney's office would be happy to look at the forms. I can look at the forms, and I can bring it back on a different item and say, hey, you know, we recommend these changes and so forth.
Okay, so we're going to, is there a motion? Is there a motion here?
I'd recommend a motion to continue these items, so that, just for the sole purpose of looking into these qualifications for these persons.
And do we have to put in a motion about asking the county attorney's office to...
We can bring that back as a separate item. I can, the county attorney's office can bring that back on a separate item.
Okay.
Say, hey, this is what we recommend as far as changes are concerned.
Okay.
Works for me.
Okay, so...
I'll put that in the form of a motion to continue this and give the county attorney an opportunity to look at it and bring it back.
Okay.
Yes.
There's a motion?
Excuse me, did you want to specify which meeting you're bringing it back or continue it endless?
I'd recommend you specify a meeting, the first meeting in June, if you want to do that.
Okay, I'm in my motion to the first meeting in June.
Second.
Okay. Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
I assume that was a four. And so that was five or five and six?
Five and six.
Five and six. Okay, very good.
No, we haven't voted on six yet. We need to present six.
Oh, okay. Six, approve the resignation of the following Republican Precinct, so, again, same?
So I'll make the same motion that I made, and I'm five on item six.
Okay.
To continue it and have the county attorney bring it back.
Okay, we can do it that way? Okay.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, now we're off to 15.
Seven.
Approve, approve, award, and sign Contract 19-SS.08 for tuberculosis consultant services for a one-year period. Okay. Mr. Gould?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. It's a question for the Health Department, more so than procurement.
Okay, I don't know what you're doing, but can we ask the pirates to sit down, please? Okay.
We have to address number seven at some point.
Oh, okay, boy, I am off the bat today. So seven, we want to...
It was a request to continue it. Somebody needs to file, somebody has to have a motion to continue.
Can somebody, I look in the backup again, I don't see...
Supervisor Johnson, that was forwarded to Chairman Angus last week.
It was. It was sent to me. I apologize. It was. I was supposed to take that off, but still, there would be no backup for you guys.
Well, I mean, what is the reason for this person wanting to?
Chairman Angus, Supervisor Johnson, my understanding is that the, as part of the final plat, milers have to be prepared so that the board can, the chairman can sign, and it can be signed by the county engineer and all that. Those milers have not been finished yet, so in order to get those completed, they ask that it be continued to the May 20th meeting.
So why was this put on the agenda if it wasn't complete?
Our understanding is that it would be completed before the agenda, or before the meeting. Generally, we'll agendize it. Once all the conditions have been met, we'll agendize the item, and then once we receive those milers, well, typically, we receive those milers prior to the meeting, and then we have it ready for the signature.
So you're giving us stuff that's not, you're just trusting that the developer does these things, and you put them on the agenda? It's a 30-day period between your meeting and ours, correct? Usually?
Generally, it's a little bit less from the, well, with the final plat, the final plat isn't heard by the Planning and Zoning Commission. It comes straight to the board. So once Development Services and Public Works have signed off that all the improvements have been completed and it's ready, or the assurances have been put in place, it's then agendized for the board to approve that final plat.
Okay, and, I don't know, it just bothers me that we put these things on, and the developer doesn't do their job to get these things on here. But I pulled it off. I'm not going to vote for it, so somebody else will have to make the motion.
Okay. The motion?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I move that item seven be continued until...
Okay, motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Oh, that was the one in opposition. How about Supervisor Watson? He still on the phone?
Affirmative, yes. Thank you.
Affirmative? Okay, very good. All right, back to number 15, and that is the contract for the tuberculosis consultant services.
Health Department.
Health Department. There she is.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Supervisor Gould?
Thank you, Denise. How many cases of tuberculosis do we have in the county?
Well, funny you should ask that question. I ask that just, we average one to two cases per year, and then we have latent cases, latent TB that we also treat.
How long do we track those cases?
It's a very good question. Would you mind if my nursing manager comes up to respond to some of these questions?[1708.13] to some of these questions? She has that more subject matter expertise.
Sure, that'd be great.
Hi, I'm Lynn Valentine. I'm the Nursing Services Manager. And as far as tracking them, usually with an uncomplicated active TB case, it takes at least nine months for treatment.
Do, so do we track them until they are cured?
Yes.
And then we're, and then we're done?
Yes.
Do, are, is, it said that treatment was provided for the patient at the cost of the county?
Yes.
Whether, if they're indigent or just everybody?
No, we, we take care of that, yes, for everybody. That is part of the state requirement.
So we spend a quarter of a million dollars on two cases?
I don't believe so.
Excuse me, it should be thirty thousand.
Okay, I got it wrong. Zero, okay. It's still a lot of money for two cases. I'm glad we only have two cases, though.
Yes, we are two.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We still do all the treatments ourselves, is that correct, to make sure that they're taken?
I haven't encountered a case yet, so I just want to make sure I respond appropriately.
That is kind of let the board know when we have a TB case, to make sure that somebody's actually doing it. They come into our facility, which is air-contained and every, all that.
That's correct, yes.
That was all just for everybody's...
And we are notified when those things happen.
We, we take care of it because we don't want somebody saying that they're taking the medicine or doing the treatment and they're not doing it, so.
Right, and part of, I'm sorry, part of our role as nurses is we go out and observe them taking the medication every single day.
Very good, thank you. Okay, do you want to make a motion?
I move that item fifteen be adopted.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item twenty-three, this is to redeem the waivers for applicants who missed the March first deadline, so they will be eligible for a property tax exemption for the 2019 tax year. Supervisor Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We got a legal opinion that this is illegal to do this.
Okay, does the assessor want to come up?
I don't know, I don't think it has anything to do with the assessor, it'll be more with the attorney.
We can give you some background if you wish.
Okay.
So, this item has been brought to the board for, I think this one literally is decades. It's been going on for a long period of time. And if you look at forty-two, at the statute that we're talking about, forty-two, one-one-one-five-three-B, let me take a moment here to pull it up. It says, if a widower, well, let me give you a little bit more background. There are certain people that are exempt from paying the property taxes, and those are typically widow, widower, persons with disability, and also nonprofits. And I won't go into the details of which nonprofits and so forth. But, in order for them to claim that exemption, they have to file at a certain period of time. And I believe it's the first Monday in January and March first of each year, in order to claim that waiver of the exemption. So, when somebody comes in and claims that exemption during that time, then it's, they get it. After that, if somebody comes in afterwards and they have to come to the board, or they need to present it to the board, at which point, then the board would decide whether to provide that exemption. So, and it says specifically, "The person or organization may have the waiver redeemed by the County Board of Supervisors at any regular meeting, except that no taxes that were due and payable before the petition was submitted may be refunded or abated." So the issue here is, for those persons who came after that deadline, coming to the board. And so for many years, literally decades, has come through the process of the assessor. They'll go to the assessor, the assessor will make the determination, the assessor then presents it to the board, and then the board will, they've almost, I bet you they've uni, universally adopted it. I don't know if they've ever rejected it before. I don't know. So, recently, our office took this up to determine whether this is the process by which it should be going forward, and our office determined that it was not. Our office determined that these people should be coming to you. They, and that's what the statute says. They should come to the board and the board should make that decision. That, our opinion came after the deadline, and this has been going on for decades and decades. So, the question is, is really the process by which you present it to the board, is that the legal process? And that's what Supervisor Johnson is referring to. We're saying, hey, they shouldn't go through the assessor. They shouldn't come through the assessor and then the assessor presents it to you and so forth. This is, this is their responsibility to do it. Because some people may not qualify. It's for you guys to decide whether they qualify or not. And you have a difficult time determining whether they qualify or not, because if you look at the backup on that, there's no information. There's nothing. You're not going to see any information about these people. So you don't know if this person is disabled, if this person's a widow or a widower, or if this person is a legitimate, or if this is a legitimate nonprofit organization. So that's why we're recommending that the process change. If you look and we, our office worked with the assessor about this, the assessor is aware of this. The problem is trying to change decades-old procedures. And so, I believe the decision was that come June one of this year, this practice would stop, so that we can, we could educate the public and notify the public and people understand that, hey, your responsibility is to file for that exemption in that January to March period. And after that, then your responsibility is to come to the board and ask for the exemption and you may have to prove that you qualify for these things. So, that's what Supervisor Johnson is referring to. It's up to you whether you want to approve this or not. It, you are still going through the process of approving it, don't get me wrong. I mean, and the statute says, it's the supervisors that have to determine, and you would be determining today whether this person qualifies or not. But if you don't feel comfortable with it, then you don't have to approve it. We will never, I will never advise you that you have to vote for something. I recommend that you vote for certain things or not vote for certain things and so forth, but ultimately, you guys are the supervisors, you're the elected officials, and you decide what should go, what should be approved and what should not be approved. What we're suggesting is that the changes be made June first, so we give people an opportunity to get in process and so forth.
Anything else?
I don't, I don't think it will fall under this item, but I think if, it says May, and we're approving something, we have no idea if anybody's qualified or not. I'm sure the assessor did their job to look at it. But if we go forward, I think the board ought to develop a policy on, you know, there's almost what, a sixty-day period where they have to file them and anything late, you know. We should have some parameters, not just because, oh, I didn't get around to doing it.
Do you agree with Mr. Esplin that if they want to do it outside that period, that they themselves have to come before the board?
Yes, I believe they do, and it's a may, you know, it's not a shall, so they would have to come and then, I'm guessing they would have to go to one of the supervisors to have it placed on the agenda. I don't believe that the staff could do it.
I think that's a good idea to do it that way. Come to your supervisor, you know? If it's in Supervisor Gould's district, contact Supervisor Gould. If it's in Supervisor Bishop's district, contact Supervisor Bishop. I mean, I'll read you the language. It says, "Submit a petition after the deadline. The person or organization may have the waiver redeemed by the County Board of Supervisors at any regular meeting." So that's the term. You're doing that today. Don't get me wrong. If that's what you want to vote for, then yes. But Supervisor Johnson makes a valid point. You don't know anything information, other than what the assessor has gathered. You know, the assessor is available and ready to comment if need be, but otherwise, you don't have any other information.
Okay, so the ones in front of us today are... ...together a new policy and that people will get that in their tax? How do they get that information?
Well, I don't know. I mean, I just know that the assessor's gonna end the policy June one, and then perhaps the supervisor, the assessor can enlighten us for additional information.
They all are qualified, just so you know. The ones that are on the list have been qualified. And yes, we would give them the opportunity to go to you. We'd give them the information and we'd make sure that they're qualified prior to that, because they're gonna come in anyway. They're gonna come in our office and ask. So we'd go over with them the documents that they have, that tells them what they're gonna need for qualification, and then send them to you.
Madam Chairman.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Ms. Ketch, can you give me a thumbnail estimate of how many of these people habitually do this?
It's normally just once, so it's not habitual. It's, it's the, it's the wife that lost her husband sometime in March, and by the time she realized she might can be able to get some help with her property taxes, she gets to us in June sometime. And it's, we were advised back in 1999 that this is the way it should be done. And I found it very inefficient, so we looked at it and our attorney told us that it really shouldn't have been done that way. And so we're changing the policy on our end, and we're hoping that you understand that. But it's not habitual, because once they're in the system, they're in the system.
Okay, so it's not something that they have to reapply for every year?
Every three years, but we send them a letter and that's our job to do that.
So it's every, every third year?
Yeah, so you don't need to worry about that coming back to you. It's just that first time allowing them to go beyond that March first deadline.
So if a woman is widowed and gets this exemption and then remarries, then three years later, she no longer qualifies for the exemption?
Correct, if anything changed during that.
Correct. I believe I read in the press that this, that some of these people are habitual, so apparently, that would be incorrect.
No, I think it's just the, because, yeah, it was a misunderstanding, because we've allowed it to, them to come into our office and we were facilitating getting it to you.
So you're the habitual person?
Yeah, we were habitually facilitating this for the people of our, of our, of our county. But I did question why we were doing that when the statute says a certain, so, you know, Lenore did a beautiful job going in and seeing what was told us before. That's why we were doing it, because we were advised to do it that way.
Sure, thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
And this may enlighten Supervisor Gould. I just did a quick, one-minute search last week, just to see how often it came last, last year in 2018. I think we brought it like eight or nine times. I mean, it was quite often, the board just automatically approved it, usually on the consent agenda.
Yeah, and it ends up, yeah, and we have to do a correction on our end, and then it goes down to the treasurer's office and they have to do a correction. So, just trying to make it a little bit more efficient, I think, is, is one of the things. And plus, I was told that maybe they didn't know about the program, but we're doing a really great job out of our office, communicating with the people of Mojave County on all the different programs that we have, via newspaper, for your radio, and every other way that, so they know the program is out there. So, we're hoping that, you know, they understand March first is gonna be the deadline, or they'll have to go to you if not.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Any other questions? Thank you. No questions? Okay, then I need a motion.
Right for me.
Madam Chairman.
Take a stab at it?
My move that item twenty-three be adopted.
Second. We have a motion second. Are you with us, Supervisor Watson?
Yes, I am, thank you.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Okay.
Madam Chairman, can I have clarification on item nineteen? Was it, was it approved under the consent agenda?
Yes, yes Supervisor Watson, it was.
Thank you very much.
You got it. All right, we're done with the consent agenda. Now we're going on to our public hearings. I'm gonna open the public hearing for item thirty-two, which is discussion of possible action, adoption of Board of Supervisor Resolution number 2019 dash oh-four-five, which is a denial of an amendment to the South Mojave Area Plan and the commission recommended denial by unanimous vote. I have one person signed up to speak, Glenn Rajanimi. Glenn, can I have some clarification? Are you opposed to the denial, or you support the denial?
I'm supporting the denial.
Okay, that's what I thought, yeah, okay.
I'm just, I reside across the street from the subject parcel of property and it's been residential. I know that it could be zone commercial, but I think it would have a negative effect on me and my neighbors as far as our right to quiet enjoyment. And I'm just hoping that you deny the...
Okay.
Deny this.
Thank you.
Rezone, thank you.
Anyone have any questions? Okay, I'm gonna close the public hearing on this.
Make a motion to approve the denial?
Second.
We have a motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Item thirty-three, I'm gonna open the public hearing, discussion of possible action, adoption of Board Supervisor Resolution 2019 oh-four-six, and that's the denial of a rezone on the same property. Mr. Rajan, you're, you signed up to speak, but I assume it's gonna be the same thing. Okay. Anyone else like to speak to this? Okay, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Need a motion?
Most approve the denial?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, item thirty-four, gonna open the public hearing, discussion of possible action, adoption of Board Supervisor Resolution number 2019 oh-four-eight. And this is a request for an amendment to the Mojave County General Plan, and this was recommended approval by unanimous vote. I don't believe I have anyone signed up for that. Anyone want to speak to this? I'm gonna close the public hearing.
Most approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, item thirty-five, I'm opening the public hearing, discussion of possible action, which is an adoption of a resolution and a request for a rezone, and this was recommended approval by unanimous vote. Anyone? Okay, gonna close the public hearing.
Madam Chairman, motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion carried. Item thirty-six, this was brought to us by Dave Huerta, Justice of the Peace from Kingman Justice Court, and I'm gonna open the public hearing, discussion of possible action to establish a ten-dollar filing and answer fee for small claims and evictions, and a twenty-dollar filing and answer fee for civil cases. Again, I got no one signed up for this. All right, then I'm going to close the public hearing. Anyone want to hear from Mr. Huerta about this? Okay.
Yes, sir.
Sir, there's a schedule here somewhere that... There you go. I'm on the wrong one. Hang on a second. There's a schedule that has counties broken down by cost. It appears that there's already a charge for filing these fees?
There is a fee set by the Arizona Supreme Court, and they allow the local courts to assess an additional fee, which is what we're asking for at this time, for the purpose of adding on additional staffing, equipment, things of that nature. There has been some changes in the rules that are gonna require the courts to maintain files much longer, a little bit more specific requirements of how we handle those case filings. Myself, and I'm speaking on behalf, on behalf of myself and my fellow judges, is we've kind of been in a dire need for staff members for some time now, and the reason we're doing this is the same reason some of the other courts have done it in the past, and what we're kind of bringing up to their level is to be able to accommodate the people who utilize our service and maintain the type of quality work that we hopefully can for everyone that uses our courts.
So is the additional, the length of retaining case files, was that from the Supreme Court or was that from the legislature?
I believe the Supreme Court decided to keep it from five years to ten years.
Okay. So the, the fee schedule, so we are, Mojave's already charging seventy-three dollars for a civil complaint?
Correct.
And you're gonna add another twenty dollars on top of that?
Correct.
Where does the seventy-three dollars go now?
Well, some of the fees go to, there's a lot of surcharges assessed, and some of those surcharges go down to the state level, and some of the fees go to the local county area. The fees and, that obviously that we're adding on is gonna stay here locally for the purpose of our staff, well, hopefully additional staff members and any equipment that the court needs. But it's broken up into different areas to where it's set off to the state and/or in the county.
I know in the legislature, they were, almost every year, added some kind of a surcharge to filing fees, criminal fees, that kind of thing.
Correct.
Would you say half of that money goes out, leaves Mojave County of the seventy-three dollars?
Of the civil part? Yes.
Okay.
I would also say, this is probably the first, this is the first time we've ever asked for any fee like this. Those fees were set by the Supreme Court, and it took a long time for the judges to come to this decision, because nobody liked to see any additional fees ever get added on anywhere, as well you know. But we're such a dire need and want to be able to provide the services that are needed.
Other choice would be to take this money out of the general fund.
Correct.
And then that's a general, general tax rather than a specific tax or fee.
For the people who utilize it.
In my opinion, I'd rather see specifics than generals. Just a sidebar comment. But, thank you, sir.
Okay, anyone else have a question? Okay, thank you. Then I need a motion.
Chairman Angus, I'd be glad to make a motion for the approval of item number thirty-six.
Got a motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Number thirty-seven, I'm gonna open the public hearing, discussion of possible action, changes to and/or rescission of Ordinance 2016 oh-five, that created Munaco, and replace it with the original source ordinance is passed by the supervisors. Our clerk of the board is asked to speak for a few seconds on this.
Thank you, Chairman Angus. A few staff members have been working on this project, 'cause we're kind of looking at different ways to not only remove this, but improve the system... but improve the system and actually do it in-house. We would actually like to request if this could be continued to the first meeting in June so that we can bring back an actual completed plan so that we can ensure that the finished product will be what is required and necessary to move forward.
And at the first meeting in June, a presentation will be given? Is that the plan or...?
We can aim for that. We're working with IT because they're going to have to create something for us, but we would at least...
Well, just a general explanation of how it's going to go down.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Second.
Well, I need to close the public hearing. All right, anyone want to speak to this? I'm going to close the public hearing. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, and now to the regular agenda. Item 38, acknowledge the Arizona Attorney General's conclusion that the Board of Supervisors violated the open meeting law with respect to allegations involving the calls to the public at the Board's March 5th, 2018, and March 19th, 2018 meetings, and acknowledge the Arizona Attorney General's opinion that the Board of Supervisors has jurisdiction to supervise the official conduct of Northern Arizona Consolidated Fire District per ARS 11-251.
Make a motion not to accept.
Chairman, if we could have a discussion about it?
Yeah, well, I'd like to discuss a bit. Do you want to say anything Supervisor Gould before I go?
No.
Oh, okay, well, that's interesting. I thought it was going to be a bigger discussion on this. I have a kind of an issue that I think, Mr. Esplin, we may need some clarification from the Attorney General. So, he says in his opinion, let me get that up here. The one part that I had sort of an issue with was that this paragraph, this beginning of this paragraph, NACFD is within the Board's jurisdiction. Boards of Supervisors are empowered by statute to supervise the official conduct of all county officers and officers of all districts and other subdivisions of the county charged with assessing, collecting, safekeeping, managing, or dispersing the public revenues. So, you know, I understand that he's saying that. I don't know if I completely agree with that, but we did sort of take action against a fire district board member at one time, and maybe that opened up the door, I'm not really sure. But what I'm talking about now is when the supervisors, this board, accepts their tax rates that come. Now, historically, and I know Supervisor Johnson and I, almost every year, have said, if we have to vote yes, if it's a rubber stamp like we've been told, why does it even come to us? It's our vote, so it's our record that we're voting yes to a tax hike. And we've been told that we cannot, we have no jurisdiction that, it's just the process. But I think this contradicts it. And so I think it's confusing and I think it's opening up a door. I don't know if that the Attorney General really meant to open, but I'd like to know the answer of it because, again, when these tax rates come to us, it's sort of, I know, we all kind of cringe a little that we have to vote yes on a tax hike when maybe we feel personally different.
Well, I think the answer to that is, for what purpose is the jurisdiction? That's what it is. And if you go in the context of this letter, it's for purposes of the open meeting laws and for purposes of the call to the public, that's what he's talking about, is we have jurisdiction to listen to people who come forward at call to the public to address issues related to, that are under the Northern Arizona Consolidated Fire District. Now, I had my disagreements as well, and if you look in the background, you can see the positions that the county attorney's office took, and we, you know, we stand by those positions. But I think the point that he's getting is for purposes of the open meeting law and for purposes of call to the public, there is that broad jurisdiction, and that's what he's citing is 11-251, Section 1. Not for other purposes and other things. And we can take up the other item on a different matter. I don't want to go too far into that, you know. But for purposes of the open meeting law and for purposes of call to the public, this is what he's saying, hey, you guys have jurisdiction to allow people so they can come up here and speak openly about those certain issues. That's what he's getting at.
But he's not just saying, he's saying we're empowered to supervise the official conduct. He's not just saying they can talk about it. He's saying this is what we do, so I think that, I think we need some clarification.
Well, and I can, I don't want to go too far about talking about tax issues and things like that. I don't want to go too far-fetched on that. But I think it's a legitimate issue and I'd be happy to talk with you off, at another time or at another meeting about it. But for purposes of the open meeting law, what I think what they're trying to get at is, open, open, open. And the other thing too, and they point this out, is that just because we may have jurisdiction over something, we may not have a remedy for it. We may not be able to assist on, we may not provide that assistance that the person is asking for, that part. I didn't write it, and there are parts of it that I disagree on. But the point that I'm making and the reason why I brought it to the board is, one, you know, the Attorney General asked us to do this. Two, I respect the office of the Attorney General and I respect the positions that they take. And three, I do recommend that the Board acknowledge the findings of the Attorney General. That's all that they're asking for. They're asking that the Board acknowledge those findings, including the jurisdictional issue related to NACFD. That's the point that they're trying to make, and I think that's the point they're trying to make is that when people come to call to the public, we want it to be open and allow people to speak because in certain respects, we do have jurisdiction. And the other thing too, that just on a difficulty level, it is, the Board should not be in the business of monitoring, censoring, or dictating what the content of somebody's speech is. And the Board did not do that in any event here. I do not believe the Board did that at all. But I think they're just, the Attorney General is just saying, hey, just be careful, is what they're trying to say, is, hey, be careful. We don't want to monitor the content of people's speech. And so that's why we should allow people to have an open discussion at call to the public rather than up here saying, well, whoa, that's something we can talk about, but that's not. Let's go back and forth, a little ping pong, whether this should be talked about and that shouldn't be talked about, and they'll say, hey, you got three minutes.
Right.
Talk about those issues.
And we've really never done that, but this was an unusual case. But again, we'll be seeing this back because I'd like some clarification. But anyway, we have a motion?
Madam Chairman, I have a question for Mr. Esplin.
Yes.
So, by accepting this letter, are we then agreeing with their finding? Or are we just saying thanks for the letter?
I believe we're saying thanks for the letter. I can see Supervisor Johnson disagreeing, and I respect that, I do, okay? Here's the options. We could do as the Attorney General said and say, hey, we acknowledge it, thank you, and move forward. Alternatively, we could do nothing. Or as Supervisor Johnson says, we could deny it and say, no, we're not going to acknowledge this at all. If that were the case, then the ball would then be in the Attorney General's court to determine whether he wishes to file suit against Mojave County and then for allegedly violating the open meeting law. Because the person who will ultimately decide it will be the court. It's, you know, the Attorney General has the authority to investigate. They look into it, they say, hey, we got this, but...
It's an Attorney General's opinion.
Exactly, it is. That's exactly right. Correct, and you saw that at the end of it too, is that this should not be applied anywhere else. You know, they have this qualifier at the end. This letter is not a formal opinion of the Attorney General's office and should not be cited as authority in other matters. This letter relates solely to the disposition of the aforementioned open meeting law complaint. It is not a formal opinion of the Attorney General's office and should not be cited as authority in other matters.
So, they sent us a letter that's not a formal opinion?
Correct.
Interesting.
Well, there's a process where you can get a formal opinion on there, and you see it on their website. We've done that before where we've asked for an opinion and then they put it on there and so forth, but...
So, if we were to reject this letter and say, no thanks, would they then maybe try to firm up their claim that we have authority over all the taxing authorities inside of the county since we have to approve their level of taxation?
They could, they could. They would file an action in court, and then the judge would have to decide if that's the case. And that's an option that you can pursue. Our office, at least, I'm not recommending to do that because in this instance, I take the position that what we're doing is we're saying we acknowledge this, that's what we are. Now, they did point out that this could quote-unquote "count" as a violation for future reference. Do you see that in the letter?
So, it gets sent to detention?
Only the chairman.
Only the chairman, thank you, thank you. But I think it's a good resolution, it's like, I want to make sure that we're clear here that I don't think the supervisors intended by any means to violate anybody's rights. This was a reasonable interpretation of what the open meeting law says because the language is in there. Only discuss matters that are brought within the jurisdiction of the Board. That's a reasonable interpretation. This is completely reasonable. And if you look back at those meetings, the person was able to speak for a good two minutes, close to two minutes, 45 seconds, at which point then we had the dialogue. At the second meeting, he was still able to speak. The point that the Attorney General is, I think, is making is to say, hey, look, just let's just make sure that people have their three minutes, their opportunity to speak, be open, and for us, we can say, okay, we acknowledge that. That's what I'm saying. And I don't think it's worth going to court and litigating it. As much as I like going to court, I have a background in going to court, I don't think this is one that, a fight that you, that I would recommend that you take.
Anything else?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
If we were to accept this, the same gentleman who filed the complaint brought up another supposed violation this morning, which we should have the county attorney look into. My point was never to stop the public from approaching us if they have a problem with the county or something that's under our control. But when people come in front of us, they expect us to take some kind of action, and I know that we can't take action on the fire district or the community college which raises taxes every year or the school boards which, you know, raise their taxes. I think it's something that we should make the Attorney General make a decision on and say, hey, you have the jurisdiction, and if that's it, then all these school boards, everybody will have to come and stand in front of us and explain things.
Okay, so that is probably something for another meeting.
I think so. I mean, I'd be happy to talk with you. I know exactly the issue you're talking about, and I think it's a valid point. But I think we would have it at a different meeting is what I would recommend. And I want to just reaffirm, and I absolutely believe what Supervisor Johnson said, and I believe it because I know each one of you. You want to allow people to speak to you and to communicate, and you guys would never want to trample on somebody's free speech rights, by no means. It's Supervisor Johnson's points out, we can't, you know, we can't solve certain problems that are not within this purview. You know, someone will cut up here and they wish to talk about expansion or denial of Medicare or Medicaid, that's not within our purview. That's something that you would have to take up with a congressman or with the senator.
I just want to put for the record that the speaker had come to us many times and was allowed to speak, and I believe that, in that March meeting, that we got the direction from your office
Yes.
that it was not in our jurisdiction and that gave it was, we didn't one day say, oh, we're not going to listen to this anymore. That was an attorney's opinion that came to the Board.
Yes, that's absolutely correct. It's an absolutely true statement, true statement, so...
Okay, so we have a motion?
Chairman Angus?
Yes.
Oh, here I am. I just wanted to reaffirm what Supervisor Johnson said. The gentleman that spoke during the call to the public this morning has the expectation, now that he brought us a complaint of, what was it? Misuse of a fire department vehicle. He now has the expectation that this Board will police the actions of a special district because we weren't allowed to say, this is out of our jurisdiction. We don't have any way to do this for you. So, you know, that's my problem. Letting someone speak, I would not want to restrict their right to do that, but now the gentleman's gone away thinking we're going to take care of this, and are we?
No, well...
To investigate the fire district for...
And, you know, that's what the letter is getting to, is that just because we have jurisdiction for purposes of open meeting law and allowing people to speak doesn't necessarily mean that we have the remedy. And he talked about that in the letter, that we don't always have the remedies, and we don't have those remedies. So, one thing you can think about is, in the open call to the public, you can direct staff, you could refer it to somebody, or you could put it on an agenda in the future, right? I mean, that's within that purview, within the exact language. Let me pull it up. Hold on a second, it says, I don't want to mislead you. "At the conclusion of an open call to the public, individual members of the public body may respond to criticisms made by those who address the public body, may ask staff to review a matter, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda." So, I mean, maybe you ask, you ask the county attorney to look into something. That's within the purview that somebody had said. And we may come back and say, I'm sorry, we can't do anything about it. Or we may say, yep, there is something there to it.
But that's my point. We did none of those. We just let the gentleman speak. We accepted his paperwork. If I was the gentleman, I'd be walking away thinking, all right, the Board of Supervisors is going to take care of this for me, but...
But he's got to understand, and unfortunately, the public doesn't understand that what's brought up to the call to the public, we may not have authority or remedies to do it. I mean, people ask you to do things all the time, and unfortunately, sometimes we just can't do something. It just depends.
So, who's going to contact that gentleman and say? Because we can't speak to them when they're speaking.
Well, you could, the person needs to, just because the person doesn't understand, I'm not saying this person in particular, I'm just saying in general, it's incumbent upon everybody to follow the law. But we don't know what all the laws are, not everybody is versed in what the law is, and if he doesn't understand that, then he doesn't understand that. At some point, this person or any person will get to know that. But you can, during call to the public, refer it to staff, or you could place it on a future agenda, or do nothing. And maybe that's the answer, is they do nothing, and eventually, over time, people realize, oh, I can't do anything, the supervisors can't do anything on that. Or maybe they can. I'm just saying in general, there may be times when you can do something.
Well, I would like to have that clarified a little more by the Attorney General's office. I mean, I'll accept his letter. I see no harm in doing that, but, yeah, I think we do need clarification.
Right, and so we'll put that on another meeting agenda and we can see as a Board what we want to do.
You can do that, you can put that on a future agenda item.
Anyone else? All right, so we do...
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
I am just happy to find out that we are the gatekeeper of all property taxation inside the county.
Well, that's...
Just gets better and better.
That's the issue that really needs clarification. I don't think he was thinking in those terms, or any of them were. Okay, so we have a motion? I need a second.
Second.
Okay, motion is second, all in favor? Let's do a roll call for this.
Supervisor Johnson?
Yes.
Supervisor Bishop?
No.
Supervisor Gould?
No.
Chairman Angus?
No.
Okay, the motion not to accept does not carry.
I'm sorry, is Supervisor Watson on the phone? He's not, okay.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we accept the Attorney General's letter.
That was what, wasn't that what your motion was?
No, mine...
Oh!
Revote that. Let me get a revote on that.
Yeah, we, I, I'm sorry, I misunderstood. I thought it was to accept it.
So Supervisor Gould, you'll have to make a motion to reconsider, which you can because you're on that side, so you can make a motion to reconsider and someone can second it.
Madam Chairman, I move that the Board reconsider its actions in the last vote.
Okay, second.
Somebody needs a second.
Where did my motion go?
Well, first we have to reconsider that vote that we just did.
Did she...
Well, but it...
Did somebody have a motion?
Well, whoa, whoa.
We have a motion that we accept the Attorney General's letter.
Okay, if that motion was made, I just wasn't following. If that motion was made, we need to address that first.
There was a previous motion on the floor during discussion. We went into discussion...
I jumped out with a motion right away.
And that was to not accept it?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought all this time you would say...
And that was denied, that was...
Right, so now we have to reconsider it.
Yeah, but there's a motion on the floor right now.
To reconsider?
No, I think Supervisor Bishop's motion went first. If that one came first, then that one needs to be addressed first.
Okay.
It can die for lack of a second, but I don't know.
Did Supervisor Bishop go first? If she went first, then the motion will go, that's on the floor right now.
Supervisor Bishop put out a motion to accept. However, once it was understood that Supervisor Johnson's motion was to not accept, then Supervisor Gould wanted to reconsider it, so...
We still have to address the first...
So, either you can allow Supervisor Bishop's original motion to just die so that we don't have to do anything on it, that we don't have to do anything on it, and then we can move to Supervisor Gould's motion to reconsider.
Yeah, if, if there's no second-
There was not a, there was not a second for Supervisor Bishop's motion to accept.
Madam Clerk, I hadn't, I didn't have a second on my motion, my motion was the first motion.
Oh, there was no second on that?
You, you actually did have a second, it was by Supervisor Gould.
Oh, I didn't hear it, okay.
It was, it came much later, but he did second it.
Yeah, okay.
All right, everyone clear on what's going on here?
Yes, we have a motion on the, we have a motion on the floor right now, Supervisor Bishop, with no second.
To simplify everything, I will graciously withdraw my motion.
And now, if, if Supervisor Gould wishes, he can, he can, he can do a motion to reconsider Supervisor Johnson's motion.
I move that we reconsider our action on Supervisor Johnson's motion.
Then we would need a second.
I'll second it.
So now you need a vote on the motion to reconsider.
Okay, so the vote to reconsider, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Opposed. Aye.
Yes, it carries.
Okay.
Do we get Supervisor Johnson to restate his motion?
Okay.
I make a motion not to accept the Attorney General's recommendation.
Okay, um, do I have a second? Our motion is second, let's, let's do it again.
Supervisor Johnson?
Yes.
Supervisor Bishop?
No.
Supervisor Gould?
Yes.
Chairman Angus?
Yes.
Motion carries not to accept the AG's recommendation.
Okay, very good. And now, item 39, we're taking no action on, so if there's nothing else, this is, meeting is adjourned.